Good evening. I now call the May 23, 2022 meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. My name is Julie Jacobson, Town Manager. This open meeting of the Town of Auburn Board of Selectmen is being conducted as a hybrid remote meeting, consistent with Mass General Law, which suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. All members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely, as long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations. The public may join us tonight in person or remotely by telephone at 1-408-650-3123, access code 235235861. Or the public can join via computer at global.gotomeeting.com/join/235235861. Please note that this meeting is being recorded by Auburn Cable Television and is anyone else recording? Great. If we could now rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the light of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So before we go to the first agenda item and the reason that I'm chairing this first meeting is this is the reorganization, which is always the first meeting after the elections. So for those of you who are wondering, you'll be glad to know I'm not going to be doing this after this. It's been much better handled by our members of the board than me. But before we go to the first agenda item, I'm just going to confirm that everybody obviously here for the board is here, so we don't have to take the board votes by all of them by roll call, although some of them, obviously, we have to. And all on the town side, we are all here as well. So I won't even have to go through any of that. And at the moment, we don't have anyone calling in. So I'm going to go to the first item on tonight's agenda, which is the annual reorganization of the board. This is being held following the May 17, 2022 Annual Town Election. And before I start, congratulations to our newest member, Steve Chambers. Welcome. We're thrilled to have you here. Following this agenda item, I will gladly turn the meeting over. That word isn't in my script, but I added that. I will gladly turn the meeting over to the newly elected chair. So I'm now going to open the nominations for chairman. Do we have a nomination for chair?
I do. I'd like to nominate Tristan LaLiberty.
A second.
Do we have any other nominations for chair?
I'd like to nominate Scott. A second.
All right. So are there any other nominations for chair?
Motion to close.
Great. Seeing none, then the nominations are now closed. So I'm going to take a roll call vote, actually, based on the first nomination. So first is the nomination for Tristan LaLiberty, and by roll call vote, Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. LaLiberty?
No.
Mr. Wren?
No.
Mr. Roughly?
Mr. Roughly? I can't read my own writing. See, I told you I shouldn't be doing this. Ms. Roughly?
No, I guess. No.
And Mr. Chambers?
No.
Okay. So the motion did not pass. And now I'm going to take the second nomination for Mr. Scott Wren. So once again, I'll take a roll call vote correctly. Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. LaLiberty?
Yes.
Mr. Wren?
Yes.
Ms. Roughly?
Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
Great. Then congratulations. The new chair is Mr. Wren. And if I, if you'd like, I prepared, I'm not sure who is going to do this, if you want to do the same thing to then elect a vice chair, you're welcome to use this. It would just be for a vice chair instead of a chair.
Okay. I will now open nominations for vice chair. Is there any nominations for the vice chair?
I'll make a nomination for Dan Carpenter.
Second.
And I'll make a nomination for Tristan LaLiberty for vice chair. And to act on the first...
I'll actually withdraw because I think it would be better for Tristan to stay as vice chair.
Motion is withdrawn.
Sure.
And on the second motion for Mr. LaLiberty as vice chair, Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Roughly?
Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
Mr. LaLiberty?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes.
Congratulations.
Okay. And moving on to public comments, I see that we have Todd Crane.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Threw you to the board. My name is Todd Crane. I reside at 121 Hampton Street in Auburn. Though I am a member of the planning board, I am speaking only for myself tonight. I apologize for my written notes, but trust me, it is better than having me up here rambling on. First, I would like to congratulate Mr. Chambers on his recent election as the newest member of the board. He will be missed on the planning board. I'll note that we are now have two vacancies on the planning board. I view this board as very critical. And in my opinion, we really need to have a full board to conduct business in the best manner possible on behalf of the town. So if you know anybody who's interested, please encourage them to apply. Second, I would like to congratulate you on your election as chair and Mr. LaLiberty on his election as vice chair. I come before you tonight to offer my support for the agenda item regarding the appropriation of $40,000 to provide discounts for summer camp program participants and offer some thoughts on the remaining use of the roughly $5 million in ARPA funding that the town has. I apologize for not being able to attend the meeting, the public meeting in November to offer these recommendations at that time. These one-time federal funds provide a unique opportunity for our community to simultaneously address the negative effects of the COVID-19 pandemic and make lasting, long-term investments in our community that can pay dividends for years to come. I commend town management for not jumping in and committing all the funds immediately and instead assessing the needs and committing funds only as those needs are identified. My recommendations are based on what other communities have done with their funds to address the realities that the COVID pandemic has taught us all. One of the first realities that the pandemic has exposed is the high level of food insecurity that many in our community experienced pre-COVID and how many of our neighbors crossed into needing the support during and after the pandemic. I do not have to tell you about the great things that the Auburn Youth and Family Services does, but I would like to highlight the vital role that they continue to play in addressing the food insecurity in our community and urge the town to provide a one-time donation using ARPA dollars to Auburn Youth and Family Services to support their food-based programming, including the food pantry. One peer municipality recently allocated roughly 2% of their committed ARPA dollars towards similar food insecurity programs, and I would recommend that Auburn follow suit and dedicate up to $100,000 for this purpose to support our most vulnerable members of the community. This amount can be used by them over the next several years to provide support as we continue to recover from and deal with the lasting effects of the pandemic. Second reality that the pandemic has exposed is the vulnerability of our local businesses. I know that the Chamber and others have strongly advocated for the town to support the business community through a single tax rate and to take other measures to spur economic growth. I will not wade into that debate tonight, but I will say that our small businesses and the people that they employ are a vital part of what makes Auburn a great place to live and work, and the COVID-19 pandemic has caused both short-term and long-term damage to our business community that could and should be mitigated through the use of ARPA dollars. While I have no recommendation on the dollar amount, I would recommend that the town work with the Chamber to establish criteria for one-time grants of $10,000 or less for expenses related to employee retention and growth. These should be targeted to small businesses with priority going to those in the retail sector, those with smaller employee numbers, those who opened shortly before or during the pandemic, and those owned by women, minorities, or veterans. These types of grant programs will not only help in the short term, but have been proven time and again to spur far greater economic growth than a single tax rate ever has. A third reality that the COVID pandemic exposed is our strong need and desire for safe facilities for walking, biking, and general outdoor recreation for both physical and mental health. Unfortunately, as people have gone out more, the rate of pedestrian and cyclist injuries and fatalities are reaching all-time highs in Massachusetts and nationally. This, as the volume of motor vehicles on the roadways have actually declined. I would urge the board to invest in two long-term planning goals of the town, as expressed through our pending open space plan and our complete streets policy. The first would be to work with DPW to lead a volunteer cleanup of Rotary Beach, to clean scrub bushes and create walking paths to the water and purchase and install some park benches, picnic tables, and maybe even some grills. This will allow for easier access to the water for people who already launch kayaks from this property and create a local nearby facility for recreational purposes. The town can address ADA issues by ensuring that at least 5%, or one picnic table, whichever is greater, is an ADA one, and liability issues with the posting of "No Swimming" or "Swim at Own Risk" signage like we have at the boat ramp on Eddie Pond already. The only operating cost would be weekly trash removal by DPW, which should be able to be handled by existing staff levels. In the same vein, I encourage the town to use the bulk of the funds toward infrastructure improvements in the forms of sidewalks, ADA ramps, and crosswalks to dramatically increase the safety and accessibility of people throughout our community via more healthy and sustainable modes like walking and biking. These two investments will meet the goals of the community's planning efforts around improving our open spaces, implementing complete streets, and providing for the safe spaces needed for mental and physical health that we all continue to seek as our daily habits have shifted with work from home and other life balance issues. I hope that you would take these recommendations into consideration when making future decisions about how to use our one-time federal funds. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crane. Do the board members have any comments or responses? Seeing none.
Through the chair, if I could just make a comment. Thank you so much. It's much appreciated. Just regarding the AYFS, we actually, we did, the board did approve initially a $60,000 sum of money for AYFS for the current fiscal year. It was primarily for food assistance. There were other elements of it. We just got a request last week to amend that contract to extend it because AYFS wasn't able to utilize all of the dollars for food, and instead, we're going to be switching some of those dollars to fuel assistance because there's now a demand for help with fuel assistance given the economy. So we're in the process of doing that amendment. And then the board also allocated $60,000, I believe $60,000 each year for three or four fiscal years. So all told, there'll be about $300,000 going to AYFS. So we much appreciate the support because that was, your comments were exactly what the board was trying to do. And I can, we can address all the other ones later. It was a good opportunity to just mention, because Mr. Crane mentioned it, we did just get a grant for over $300,000 for additional winter road repair that you accepted last, I think at the last meeting you accepted it. And that will allow us to do some sidewalk work, some ADA work, and we have another grant pending right now for some ADA work as well. So again, appreciate those comments because those are the things that we're trying to prioritize to help the taxpayers. So wanted to thank you and will absolutely look at all these.
Onto public hearings, presentations. Ms. Jacobson, are we going to open each one individually or?
The interesting thing is, so you have a continued hearing. So we're putting that as the continued hearing, but then you had two additional nominations, and per your policy, you need a hearing for each. I think because there's no legal way it is a hearing, I think you could open all three hearings and do it at once since they're all about the same item, which is why we put it on the agenda this way.
All right. I need a motion to open up the, so we don't open up the continued hearing, so just the, to name it after the trustees' room and the Artemis Ward Room. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to open both hearings.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
It is a vote.
Now, you could continue the hearing at the same time.
Okay. No motion needed?
I don't believe so, because it was continued. I think you're okay.
And just go to public comments on that or?
Yes, I believe it was my understanding from Sharon that there was someone here to speak to the Artemis Ward nomination, and I see Mr. Toth is on to speak to the nomination for the trustee room. And then in your packets, you have the letter, and I know Jean Collins, a library director and town resident, had nominated the Dr. Martha and Dr. Arthur Pappas, and that is in your packet again. That was what triggered the whole start of the hearing.
All right. So starting out in regard to Dr. Arthur and Dr. Martha Pappas, is there anyone that wishes to speak?
Yeah, through the chair. I think that was the letter that's in your packet. And the library director is here if you wanted to say a word.
Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak and welcome to Mr. Chambers to the select board. My name's Jean Collins. I'm the director of the Auburn Public Library, and I've also been a resident for 40 years of the Town of Auburn. So if I could have a moment, I would just like to read the letter in case some of the people watching or watching later have not heard my reasons for nominating the sunroom for the Pappas Foundation. Dear Select Board, in my capacity, serving the public as director of the Auburn Public Library for the past six years and as a resident of the Town of Auburn for 40 years, I have observed the exceptional level of dedication and financial support provided throughout many areas of the town by Dr. Arthur and Dr. Martha Pappas. Most recently, Dr. Martha Pappas through the Dr. Arthur and Dr. Martha Pappas Foundation provided substantial financial support in the form of $655,000 in grants toward the Auburn Public Library Goddard Park Pedestrian Bridge Project, which is anchored by the highly anticipated sunroom addition to the back of the library. This week, and, excuse me, this was written in December, an additional individual donation from Dr. Martha Pappas in the amount of $50,000 to be directed toward specific furnishings and equipment for the children's room and the new sunroom addition was made through the Friends of the Auburn Public Library. These funds will support much-needed furnishings, technology, and other resources and materials for the children's room and the sunroom addition. In recognition and in honor of the generosity of the Pappas Foundation, in their unwavering dedication and support to the Town of Auburn, and in particular to the library, I would like to propose that the sunroom addition at the Auburn Public Library be named the Dr. Arthur and Dr. Martha Pappas Room. I understand that the Select Board has a policy that would require a public hearing prior to naming any town facility, and I am happy here to present my letter. I would also just like to add, public libraries are generally considered the community hub of the town. And I think that in terms of the Town of Auburn, certainly the Pappas contributions are synonymous with the community, which is also, you know, the library is the hub of the community, and certainly the Pappas Foundation has certainly contributed a great deal. And so I thank you for my consideration, for the consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Collins. And Matthew Toth, would you like to speak in support of naming the library sunroom the trustees' room?
Good evening. I'm really sorry. I'm not breaking up. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I, I, I would like to be, I grew up on Friday. I was reminded you were here tonight, but my grand's wedding week. And so I, I have a letter that I wrote to, I don't know if someone will read that, but I unfortunately have.
Yes, Mr. Toth, you are breaking up a little bit. Would you like me to read that letter on your behalf?
I'm sorry.
You were breaking up a little bit in that statement. It seemed like as if you were asking if one of us could read off your statement.
Yes, please.
Absolutely. As a resident of Auburn for 50 years and having served the community as a town member, school committee member, and currently a member of the Auburn Public Library Board of Trustees, I'm taking the opportunity you offered to me to suggest a new name for the addition to the Auburn Public Library. I realize there are a number of people who would have easily, who would easily deserve the naming honor, some who have contributed many hours of service to the community, and others who have offered substantial financial support. My suggestion is to name the new addition, the trustees' room, and by doing so, believe you would recognize hundreds of men and women who have contributed to the success of the library since its inception in 1873. The trustees have as their only compensation the joy of helping to assure a community of a library that provides, builds, and sustains the belief in each person's ability to grow. The role of the trustees to bring the needs of the community to their meetings has remained unchanged for over 100 years. These women and men believe that the library helps define the kind of community we are in one of our, in one of our most democratic institutions, a place where all are welcome and equal to participate in the services and use all of the library resources. You have the opportunity of recognizing the contributions of hundreds of residents who have contributed thousands of hours to the community. There would rarely be a more appropriate place to acknowledge them. I would be happy to participate in any further discussions you have in making this decision. Thank you for your consideration of naming the addition to the library, the trustees' room. Sincerely, Matthew Atoth.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I don't have much to add. My belief is not that there's a need to recognize the Pappas', because I also think of everything they've done. But I think there's a merit when there's a chance to recognize the hours that me and my trustee, all the years, and you could not have anything that I've written for that contribution. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Toth. And lastly, do we have anyone here to speak on the naming of the new library sunroom, the Artemis Ward Room?
Thank you for the opportunity. I'm Cynthia Carey. I'm a resident of Auburn. I'm a member of the Friends of the Auburn Public Library, and I'm clerk of the corporation for the Friends. I did write a letter to the Select Board. And if I may, read the letter?
Yes.
Dear Select Board, I have been a resident of Auburn for the past 23 years. One of the wonderful services in town is the Auburn Public Library. I'm a frequent user of the library. I'm also a member of the Friends of the Auburn Public Library. There is a discussion regarding the naming of the new sunroom that will be built at the library. I'm aware that there is a proposal to dedicate the sunroom to the Doctors Pappas. I know how much the Pappas' have contributed toward making Auburn a wonderful place to live, and they both deserve Auburn's gratitude. The Dr. Arthur and Dr. Martha Pappas Recreation Complex is a jewel. Dr. Martha Pappas made a significant contribution to the Friends to be used to furnish the new sunroom and for the children's room. However, I would like to propose a dedication that honors an historical figure associated with Auburn, and that's Artemis Ward. The Town of Ward, Massachusetts was incorporated in 1778 in honor of Artemis Ward. In 1837, the town was renamed Auburn, Massachusetts after complaints from the U.S. Postal Service that the name Ward was too similar to the nearby town of Ware. The citizens of the time wanted to honor and provide a legacy for a hero and statesman of the time. He's lost the name of the town, but we can honor his service by naming the new sunroom, the Artemis Ward Room. Major General Artemis Ward, son of Massachusetts, graduate of Harvard College, judge, legislature, delegate to the Continental Congress, soldier of three wars, and the first commander of the Patriot Forces. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. Carey. Do we have any comments from the board members?
So in addition to naming it, will there be a plaque for this? Will it be over the room? I haven't seen any designs. I'm just wondering, like, what's going to take place, just to call it that rather than the residents just saying, "The Sun Room."
Right. Through the chair, there would likely be a plaque. We have not designed it. We're still in the design stage right now for the addition and the sprinkler system. So we have hired a firm that's doing that design. When the, when we go out to bid, that's when we could include something in the bid for a plaque, or we could do the plaque just on our own. I mean, generally, those things are just done, we can go out and get that plaque. It wouldn't have to go out to bid because of the cost of it. And likely, the type of company that we're putting the bid out to for the actual addition, which is a sunroom-type addition, wouldn't do a plaque either. So we can design that in-house or go to another company and get some ideas.
Thank you.
Absolutely. So I love that Artemis Ward was a suggestion. That was great because I'm a history buff, and not many people know who Artemis Ward is. And outside of Shrewsbury, I don't think anyone does. So I appreciate that. I do think that with the committee we established, there are ways to honor the trustees and Artemis Ward and whoever else has contributed to Auburn. But given the Pappas' contribution specifically to this project, I think it's most appropriate to name it after them. So that's where my support's going. I don't know if any of the board members have any?
Mr. Carpenter? I would just suggest that we send these to the committee that we created for their consideration and wait to hear back a recommendation before we act on any of these, because we did ask them to look at the project as a whole, so I would not want to be presumptuous and take something away from them when we asked them to look at the whole project. But I think they're all great ideas, actually. I stand with Mr. LaLiberty as far as where I might or would likely be, but that's not to diminish any Mr. Ward, and certainly not any of the trustees. And we have a lot of great people in this town that have done a lot of great things. I just feel firmly on what the Pappas family has done, and that's a legacy, and they put up the money. So I, I actually would agree with Mr. Carpenter as well, though, in that we do have a committee working on this right now, and I think it'd be best that we allow them some time to look at these and come back with some recommendations as well. So, yes, Mr. Chambers?
So that committee was created to recommend names, not necessarily, like, it still comes back to the board for a vote, and their recommendations would be?
Yes.
Yeah. The rules put together for that board were that it would, or was that, it would have to be in line with our policies, so the naming of something like the room would have to come back to the board for approval. But we were looking for other ways. We had talked about, you know, a walking path or stones dedicated to them or something so that the committee could be creative. We still, we have one member that was picked from the library board that we haven't picked, our own board member yet, or a member of the public yet.
So that committee's responsibility will be more than just naming this room, right?
And also recognizing other people's contributions and how we
In other ways.
memorialize that at the site as well.
Okay. Thank you.
So we would need either a motion to move forward the vote or a motion to continue?
I'll make a motion to name the room after Dr. Martha and Dr. Martha Pappas.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
And we'll do a roll call. Mr. Carpenter?
No.
Mr. Roughly?
Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
No.
Mr. LaLiberty?
Yes.
And I'm going to vote no for now and allow the subcommittee to do what we had asked them to do, while still making known that my vote will ultimately, unless changed, be with the Pappas.
Chairman, I would make a motion that we forward these to the committee, these three letters, and that we continue the hearing until, I'll say, our first meeting in August.
Second. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Do you want to ask for a volunteer from this board?
Yes. Do we have a member of this board that would like to volunteer for that committee? We really should get that committee one big one.
We did get our first application from a resident that I know, Town Manager, and I don't know, so.
And the committee was made up from a member of this board, the library board?
We, we have one library board member. Looks like we have one application from a member of the public, however, we do need one member from this board as well.
Okay. Not just because I'm new, I will volunteer.
Thank you, Mr. Chambers. I'll make a motion to report Mr. Chambers to the committee as represented.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Hi.
It is a vote.
Through the chair, Town Manager, would we be able to also appoint Mr. Coth since he's here tonight and he is the labor board president?
I think that's fine, because you are asking the board of trustees for their recommendation, and if that's their recommendation, it would just be a confirmation.
With that, then I'll make a, I'll make a motion to appoint Matthew Toth to the committee. Second.
All those in favor?
Hi. It is a vote, and we have a committee.
Almost.
Almost. Moving on to communications, there are none. And under general Select Board items, we have a drain layers license, license within the previous five years, Westcock Custom Homes of Auburn, Massachusetts.
Chairman, I'll make a motion. We approve it, provided that all applicable requirements of state and town and neighbor's departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license subject to our conditions stated upon, it fair to comply with any and all. Shall invalidate the license and render it null and void.
A second?
I'll second.
Any others in favor?
Hi.
It is a vote. Gifts acceptances? Do we have the DDIS Public Health? Town Manager, have any comments?
No, just other than we were pleasantly surprised to receive this donation from the Auburn Water District in the amount of $5,000 to be used toward our hazardous waste day expenses. So we're really grateful for this.
Do we have a motion?
Chairman, I'll make a motion that we Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we, uh, approve the gift and ask that a letter be prepared for your signature to the Water District expressing our thanks.
Second. All those in favor?
Hi.
Through the chair, if you would not, uh, if you'd indulge us, could to have Eileen Alexander just speak, uh, I believe about hazardous waste day?
Yes.
As well as this grant?
Good evening and thank you and welcome, Mr. Chambers. Um, I just really wanted to publicly thank the Auburn Water District. We have not had the hazardous waste day for four years. July of, uh, 2018 was the last time, so we know that our expenses are, are gonna be incredibly higher this time around. So, we'd just like to publicly thank, um, the superintendent Gregory Woods from the Auburn Water District, as well as, um, all of their commissioners, um, who so generously donated this money to us, and we certainly can use it. So, thank you.
Thank you. A library gift? $50?
Motion that we accept both with gratitude.
Second. All those in favor?
Hi. Hi.
Hi. I believe, though, there's a third one, correct?
I, I believe there was as well.
There is, through the chair, this came in after the agenda was posted, but we can include it because it, it falls under the notified category of gift acceptances, so.
And Mr. Carpenter, was your motion for both that was?
Yes, I forgot that we had a third. If it's okay with you, I'll add a third. All three with gratitude. Well, actually, the third one is for, uh, I'm gonna stick with the two, because the third is for 500, and I think at that level, we're grateful for all gifts, but I think it's great to have a letter sent to the, the folks.
We'll treat this one separately. So, do I have a motion on the third gift?
I'd make a motion that we accept and the letter be prepared for your signature, Mr. Chairman, to express our thanks to the giver.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Moving on to proclamations and recognitions, uh, we have proclamation for the Historical Society and Tuttle Square School. If I would be needed to approve or deny the proclamation.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve the request.
Second. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Like, that one wasn't even a roll call, but we did it in sync, it was.
Moving on to town manager items.
Thank you. Through the chair, the first item, so I just wanna make sure, okay, just wanna get it in order. Uh, the first item is a request to use $40,000 in ARPA funds to provide discounts for all of our summer camp program participants. And I know, I just wanted to acknowledge Kristin Pappas is here, uh, with us this evening, and she's been working hard to advertise our summer camp program. And again, this is a program we haven't held since 2019, because as we all know, COVID started in, uh, 2020, we had to cancel the camp, and we weren't able to hold it last year either. So, uh, as we always do, we put out flyers on the program, and our attendance response has been lower than usual. Usually, we're up around 30 to 50, yeah, 30 to 50, uh, per week, and it, you can sign up for one week, two weeks, the entire eight weeks. You can sign up for a half day, a full day, pay by the day. So, the attendance is down, we're at about 15 a week instead of the usual 30. And Ed and I have had a lot of conversations about this, and, uh, and Ed had actually raised the, the suggestion that, you know, given the economy, given the fact that COVID has changed a lot of people's, uh, lives and that many people are working at home. So, our summer camp program was likely a good daycare option for people when their children were out of school for the summer and they needed programs. A lot of parents are actually still working at home. So, A, they may not be able to afford, uh, the programs as much, especially with multiple children, and B, working at home, they don't need the daycare in the facility as much. We still think it's a great program, and we know that ARPA funds are used to help communities, and Mr. Crane just said it very well, to help those who are really affected by COVID most, and there isn't a person in this town that isn't affected by COVID in some manner. So, we would like to use up to $40,000 over, over three summers, uh, two or three summers. If we use all of it before then, that would be great, but we think we could use about, um, 12,000 to 15,000 a year to offset the cost of the summer camp program, uh, by offering a discount of, uh, so, a $250 weekly charge for an individual participant would be lowered to $200.
So, we, if, if I may, we're suggesting a 20% discount, whether it be on the weekly rate or the daily rate, uh, so it's consistent throughout the, the, um, the pay scale. I think clearly, given the numbers that we're seeing now, I think it's a reflection on a number of things. One, COVID, I think, but number two is the current economics that we're all facing. Um, I think families have less, um, discretionary income to, um, to utilize for things such as day camps and to get their children involved. And it gives us an opportunity, we're, we're asking for a cap of 40, and based upon, uh, participant levels, if we were to get to the 30 in the 50 level, uh, it'd be about $12,000 per year at a, at a 20% discount. Certainly, we can revisit this the following year to see if the economy has, uh, has changed, uh, people's, um, spending habits, but certainly, we would like to commit, at least for three years, a, a maximum of 40, um, and it gives us some flexibility in the future years to, to tweak that however we can. That would provide for a benefit for the residents of our community.
Thank you. And, uh, and in addition, I would add that Kristin's done a, a good job marketing this. There, there are a lot of people who are involved in this program, so the program is run through, for our new member, the program is run through our Recreation and Culture Division, which is a division within DPW. So, I see DPW Director Joanna Paquins here, so she's been involved. DDIS is heavily involved in the program through the Division of Public Health, because it all has to be done in accordance with Mass General Law for public health purposes. So, Eileen and Darlene and, uh, Jordan have been very involved. So, this is a multi-department, uh, project that we embark on. If the board would support this recommendation tonight, we would immediately tomorrow get word out to all of our residents, as well as our employees, who are also eligible for their children to go. We think that this summer, truly, people need the help. And rather than make it income-eligible, which involves, you would have to actually hire someone to do the income eligibility for confidentiality, for checking W-2 forms and tax returns, and we just said, just do it across the board, because again, there isn't a family that doesn't need the help. Uh, there's also a discount that exists anyway and always has for the second child and, and for the children. So, you pay the full price, which would now be 20% off, and then after that, it's another 10% off for second, third, fourth children. So, families with multiple children, uh, hopefully can afford to send them at least for a couple of weeks of fun and entertainment.
I, I know my, myself with my kids, it's been hard to get them back out into the world. They'll get used to that new normal, um, so anything we can do to make it easier to get people out and get rid of that old normal.
Right.
Uh, is, is a really good thing, especially considering inflation.
And through the chair, I should add, the, the other benefit to this, it's not just the families who send their children. This program creates jobs for local Auburn residents. We have so many teens who go to these programs when they're kids, and then when they get old enough, they wanna be counselors. And we hire the counselors based on the number of participants. So, there's a formula that the state requires, they have to have a certain amount of counselors per a certain amount of participants. So, the more participants we get, the more jobs we create for the kids in this community who really need to have a summer job. It's good for them, they're, they're, they're great, uh, they're great with the little ones, they're, they're, it's great to have them, but with a small enrollment right now, we're not gonna be creating a lot of jobs.
And do we have a motion for approval?
I had some, I had a question.
Yes.
So, reducing the cost is expected to get full enrollment. If this cost reduction doesn't, would be, we, would we be willing to reduce it more this year, knowing the economic impacts and saving less for future years, not knowing that, until we get full enrollment?
Uh, through the chair, we could do that. We could see what the 20% discount brought. We are running a little short on time. Uh, the program starts, the first week starts, uh, June Thank you, June 27th, so we've got a month. Uh, so we'd have to get moving pretty quickly, but that would absolutely be a consideration. We just, we have to use the funds because there's still the cost to the program. So, we just wanna use the ARPA to offset the cost of it. So, if the board would like us to put more of the cost on ARPA, we could offer a greater discount.
To Mr. Chambers' point, could we possibly just keep this on as a town manager item for the next meeting or two, just to see where numbers are at, and if we needed to vote to adjust, we could do so?
Or, uh, alternatively, if you wanted, you could take the vote to appropriate 40,000, up, up to $40,000 of ARPA funds, uh, to be used to provide discounts. And then you wouldn't have to be specific on what those discounts are. Uh, just, you know, we did check a number of summer camp programs just to, for comparative purposes, just to see where we fell. I believe at, at $200 a week, it, it is lower than many programs, so hopefully that will do it. But again, if it doesn't, if you word the vote to not be specific, we can go back and say, okay, one more try at it. Uh, but we're gonna have to do it very quickly, because we've gotta get, we need to know what our numbers are so we can hire. Kristin's gonna be struggling to get hirees if we wait too much longer.
I, and I think all the reasons, again, the employment of other kids in the town, as well as providing that opportunity, we should be flexible, and hopefully, we get the full enrollment and more people can partake in it, so.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Through the chair, do we know, so if we appropriate the $40,000 and prove that tonight, how much we have left to spend from our allocated ARPA funds?
Approximately $5 million. I, I will tell you that we plan on coming in at the next meeting, uh, with a recommendation for sewer infrastructure, again, to Mr. Crane's point, you know, trying to do something that benefits the entire community. We have some major sewer infrastructure needs, and we have major HVAC needs. And both of those are either on the CIP or will shortly be on the CIP, and to take them off and use ARPA funds to do that saves the taxpayer dollars' money, because we won't have to borrow for those other projects. So, uh, we plan on coming in, there are two priorities, the Warren Road Pump Station and Thank you, the Sword, the Sword Street. Thank you. Uh, those are really major projects. We've had a break, um, at the Sword Street, we, we don't wanna have another one. We're trying to be preventative, uh, it's expensive, and that would absolutely save, save the taxpayers. So, we do plan on coming in, I believe, at the next meeting, uh, with, out of respect for the new member, we didn't wanna come in with multiple million-dollar requests
I would've been ready for.
knowing you haven't had an opportunity. Just didn't wanna drop that on your first, on your first night, so, uh, but that, that is our intent, is to come back, uh, for some of those sewer projects. And the reason being, engineers are going to be very, uh, few and far between across the country because of all the ARPA dollars. Most of these projects are being used for infrastructure projects, and then there's also the federal infrastructure bill. So, there's additional infrastructure, billions of dollars that's going out there, and every one of these projects needs to be designed and engineered. So, it's going to be difficult to get engineers, we can do some of the work in-house with ours, but for the most part, you have to go out to bid for some of these. And while we have until 2026, December 2026, to spend the money, we need to make sure that it's designed, we get it ready, and then we go through the process. So, a larger-scale project like that, we feel that we would commit, that would still leave a lot of ARPA dollars there for future discussion. So, that's our plan.
And Mr. Carpenter?
I have a couple of questions, Mr. Chairman. So, what is the total cost of, to run the program?
I'm sorry, what's that?
What is the total cost to run the program? On a yearly basis?
Well, it, right now, uh, as Julie had indicated, it, there's a ratio on number of counselors, uh, number, uh, based upon number of participants. So, we, we, we know what that number is, but all depending on the enrollment. I would think the total cost of the program, if I were to guess, probably runs about $75,000?
Ed, you're guessing? This is not like you.
Well, the thing is, that the summer rec program not only takes in revenue for these summer camps, but there are other activities ongoing, so, um...
And without knowing the enrollment, we don't know the cost, uh, because if the enrollment falls in between certain numbers, then you need two counselors. If you get two more applicants, all of a sudden, you may need four counselors, and it depends on the age. You need a different amount of counselors depending on the age. So, we, until we know how old the children are who are being enrolled, we don't know what the counselor ratio is.
So, so my thought is, I would be happy to support 20,000, and then let's see what the discount does, and then let's see as Kristin and, and the team go through things. You know, we revisit this later in the year, that would be my wish. I certainly am not gonna say no, uh, 100%, but I would say I would happily give half the money now, and then let's see how the summer program goes, and then later in the year, we could certainly talk about it. That would be my wish, but obviously.
I just have a good, the 40,000 is, is for a three-year program, correct? So, are you saying you would do the 20,000 just for this year?
I would take the suggestion that we not structure it by year, see what it is, because I just heard that we have a lot of variables going into this program. Obviously, hesitancy on the part of parents to put their kids in with other children that, you know, I, I'm sure it's not just economic, I'm sure some of it is concern for their health and safety. So, I would just say 20,000, let's see what it is, be flexible, give the town administration the opportunity to drop the price to, I mean, I'd be happy if we dropped the price to 150, especially because, as you say, $5 a gallon of gas, if you're a trucker, it's six plus, you know, in addition to that ballooning every other cost up, you know, I'd be more than happy to do that right now, but I, I just don't wanna commit 40,000 right now. That's just me.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to, um, approve up to $20,000 in ARPA funds to provide discounts for summer camp program participants.
Second. And roll call, Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Ruffey?
Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
Mr. Liberty?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes.
Great, thank you.
If I may, just so I'm clear, is that $20,000 over three years? Is that 20,000 for year one, and then we're gonna reexamine?
It's 20,000 however you wanna spend it, Ed. What need to spend it?
Right, we weren't specific with that motion, so I think that would depend on the applicants you give.
And the depth of the discount that you have to have to get people in.
And there's still an opportunity to come back.
Exactly. We're giving you leeway.
Well, it's tough to administer upfront on that level of discount, because they're enrolling at different times, right up until the last day, and you, these people are paying as they're enrolling, so it makes it difficult to apply even a deeper discount. And you, you, you may be in a situation where you're refunding these individuals, it creates...
So, what would a 25% discount look on the enrollment?
It's $250 a week, I'll just throw out the week. There are varying rates for half-days, full-days. There's also, uh, uh, early drop-off and after-program care, so there's extended days. So, generally, it's $250 a week, so the 20% would be $50. So, uh, the, uh, a quarter of that would be approximately, um, 60-ish?
I have faith, Ed, and you and Kristin, that you can figure this out. I really do. I know that you can figure it out in the best way possible, that's gonna make it work. So, I'm gonna trust you guys to do the right thing. If I get any calls, I can blame you two, but I won't, because I know you'll do a great job. But this is a good item, thank you for bringing it forward.
Yeah, excuse me, uh, Kristin, do you have a question, just to clarify, just?
Hi, good evening, I'm Kristin Pappas. Um, thank you for talking about this. My question to you is, um, you, the, would it be still 20% that we would offer the discount?
I think that's a discussion we'll have to have tomorrow
Okay.
to determine whether or not we wanna consider something
Greater?
than 20
Okay.
and how that affects, um, the total pool, and how much flexibility there is from the 12 to the 20, so.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
Through the chair, I just wanna say, so if, the original ask was 20,000 doll, or 40,000 dollars over three years, so 20,000 dollars just this year, we'll see how successful it is. I would say, take off what you were originally planning to take off. If it goes really well, like Mr. Chambers says, we can come back and we can give out more and then be prepared for the next two years
Right.
and see if this, this discount really has impacts, um, going forward. I don't, I don't think you guys should be tied down to thinking, you know, it's only half, if we've got, so we gotta change the discount, and I think go with the original plan, um, and then we can see how successful it is.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, I don't think our intention is to tie our hands with that.
Nope.
Any more comments? Any more comments? Moving on to a vote to authorize, accept, and expend an Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs grant to update the housing plan. Total project cost $15,000 with a 25% match of $3,750.
Right, so through the chair, some of you may recall that it, it was actually about six years ago, we got a grant, a community compact grant for $25,000 from the state to do a housing plan. Auburn had never had a housing plan. So our housing plan also includes a housing production plan, which is one of the reasons we were able to help support Penrose and the redevelopment of the schools, because we have a housing plan, and that counted toward a lot of the funds that they applied for. So that, time flies, and here we are, five years later, after the plan got approved, and the plan's approval expires this fall. So we are, have been looking for grant dollars to try to help us update this plan. It's, won't be as extensive as the first one, because we're updating a plan, but like a master plan, it still involves a lot of work. So we are applying for this grant through, with the help of CMRPC, which helped us do the first one. So we want to build a contract with them again, they had actually brought in a consultant, an outside consultant, and that's how we developed the first plan. So we found out that there's funding available at the state for projects like this. So the total project cost, we figure, will be about $15,000. There is a 25% match required. It can be cash, or it can be in-kind with staffing, with, with our hours. So the town planner's hours, mine, Ed's, can go toward the match. So we don't have to seek funding right now for that match, we're just asking for approval to accept and expend if we get approved for it. The deadline that we found out from CMRPC, we found out, I think, the day after your last board meeting, that we had to get it in before today. So the letter, the letter asking if we could move forward the application, that letter has already gone in. But now, I think we're going to have to do more of a full-blown application, and hopefully we will get the funds, and then this project would therefore start in the fall. My understanding is these grants are announced in the fall.
And do we have a motion?
I have a question.
Yes.
Can we use the CMRPC hours that the delegates accrue for the town, or are those already allocated?
That was already allocated for this current fiscal, this upcoming fiscal year, we've already allocated it. We get another allocation coming up, so if CMRPC is actually already committing some hours to this, of that match of 3,750, I believe they're putting in, I think, 1350 would be from their hours. If we needed more, we would have to look at the next round of the DLTA funds, but, because the current round is already committed.
Okay, and we're confident the in-kind will work with your hours?
Yeah, yeah, from what we understand, that the in-kind should be accepted. If worse came to worse, total project cost, if we had no other choice, they would accept some of the hours, sometimes that's happened at the state. We're thinking we maybe need $1,000, that's it. But I don't think we're going to need any, I think we're going to be able to do it with just the hours of our current staffing. There's a lot of work that goes into this, so we're going to not only hit that match, we're going to far exceed that match with the hours that go into it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions? And do I have a motion?
Motion to accept and expend the grant as outlined by the manager.
Second.
Second.
And any comments? And all those in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. And lastly, we have a request for the board to vote to declare the police cruiser four as surplus.
Correct. So we have one request here, you have the letter in your packet, from Chief Lemon, to declare the cruiser as surplus. It has no more useful life left on it. What we always do after it's declared surplus, for our new member, you have to declare town property surplus, and once you get the vote of the board to declare it surplus, then we can put it out for auction, bid for scrap.
Make a motion, we declare it surplus.
Second for discussion. And any comments, discussion? Yeah, I just had a quick question through the chair, through the town administration. Do we know how much we'd expect to get for a police cruiser at auction? Probably not much, since we stripped it, but.
All right, great.
Historically, it's like $2,000 to $3,000.
Okay.
And we do, so we'll strip whatever we can, whatever parts we can salvage, and then the rest, it's pretty much going for the price of the metal.
Yeah. Where do the dollars go back to? General fund? Okay, thank you.
Any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. There's no tabled items, no select board items, do any, well, it's not that we couldn't do that. And we have the minutes from April 11th and April 25th in the packet, do we have any edits needed? We'll accept those as written, thank you, Sharon. And do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.